Okay, the time is seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting forward. Please say your collective name. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Misty, will you please call the vote?
Karen Hagan.
Present.
George DeHomes.
Present.
Andrea Kramer.
Here.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Carol Ann Sworson-Bach.
Present.
Krista Blain.
Here.
Tim Tesher.
Here.
Skylar Rensel.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We have with us the adoption of the agenda. First of all, if there's any conflict of interest, silence for anyone involved in the council tonight, you can look through the agenda and then determine that and please speak up at the time those items are considered. And I'll accept a motion to move, approve the agenda.
I have a recommended change to the agenda. Due to publication requirements, item K lists the public hearing for Frankie's place on 7/5, and that date is changing to 7/17. Same motion, change of the date.
I have 7/3.
Okay. So it should be 7/5? It should be 7/17. And item J, because the third is granted as administrative leave for the city workers, we're going to have the meeting on the 5th, Wednesday the 5th, as opposed to the third. So item J, please change the third to the fifth.
So a new business, item J. It lists the hearing to be set for July 3rd. We're gonna have the council meeting on July 5th, given the governor granted administrative leave for the third.
I have it scheduled, leave it back. And I don't have the other one on J.
J, right here.
Okay.
7/5.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, we have potential amendment to the agenda. I'll accept a motion for the agenda with the amended dates.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amended dates.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. First of all, the minutes for the June 5th council meeting. You have those in your packets. I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Again, moved and seconded. It approves the minutes from the June 5th council meeting. Any discussion, additions, or corrections? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Minutes are approved. We also have minutes from the June 12 special council meeting, and I'll accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the 12 June special council meeting. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
And the motion carries. Look at item A, the claims bills in between. You should have those in your package. I'll accept a motion to accept the bills in between.
Motion to accept bills in between?
For second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the bills in between. Is there any discussion?
What's the Quintrum construction water deposit refund as of 8/5?
Yes.
They're not gonna need that anymore?
They check it out, and when they get it, when they get it to use again, when they'll need it again, they'll pay another part.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Current claims, and we do have a correction on the current claims. You'll note on page 11, builder's first source, a $273.98 charge is removed. It's a duplicate charge, and that will bring the new total to 501, 409, 30. Accept a motion to, accept the current claims as corrected.
I'll make that motion to accept the current claims as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the amended current claims. Is there any discussion, questions, or comments?
I have a question. Kate O'Horson. How much time, Owen? What all does that include?
We agreed to, I think it was 19,000. I have to look in contact exactly, and this is progress building towards that. So it's not an hourly charge.
That's for the year of 2,000. Okay, so, all right.
Are there any other questions, comments? If not, all those in favor of accepting the current claims as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And at this time, we'll open it to communications from the public with a reminder that we do have a seventh end hearing, and so we may have to interrupt you if there's any communications from the public.
Has nobody else got to talk? I'd like to take just a minute here. We have a gentleman in the audience.
Okay, go ahead and come forward to the microphone, please. Again, we may have to cut you off here in a couple of minutes.
My name is Mike Erk. I live on 25th called Washington Avenue.
You spelled your last name, so?
E-R-K.
I told you it right, thank you.
On March 27th, I filed a complaint with Kim, the building inspector, for a violation of the trash garbage nuisance ordinance against our neighbors at 2514 Washington Avenue. And I know there's been a good four months now, and I guess I'm just, it's my understanding that maybe the city council will address this on July 5th, at their next regular meeting, but I will be gone on July 5th. And I'm just, if that's the case, I guess I'd just like to voice that, you know, we've lived there, I've lived there 30 years, and the neighbors have become quite a nuisance. I've got pictures in March, on March 27th, of the garbage that had been collected there in the drive, and to date that has been, some of, or most of that has been put in a bin. But it's my understanding that nobody, or they don't have the money to get rid of the bin. There's still garbage in the yard, and I'm just wondering if the city council is gonna act or take any recommendations on that on July 5th.
Okay, and I'm not familiar with that specific case, but we will certainly look into it, and that will be, you know, if that's necessary, we'll put that on the agenda for the one of the meetings in July.
Okay. If that's on the agenda, and I see that on the agenda, should I send a letter? What should I do to encourage you to enforce your ordinances and get this place cleaned up?
And I think a letter would be appropriate if you're not able to be here, to just make sure that you voice your concerns. We too are concerned about that sometimes. The process of going through and legally doing those things is a little bit long, and I apologize for that, that we will be, we will be looking into it. I've got your address and name, and we'll follow up with our co-enforcement officer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, the time is 7:10, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing. And what we are having the public hearing concerning is retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm License for Pistol Paddies LLC to be used at 445 North River Street. This is a new business that's coming into town, is located at the former Go India Mexican Restaurant. Are there any comments from the public concerning this business and the hearing?
I can go in and listen to them a little bit. They have other things in there for sale.
Okay.
And as far as the area, it has been restricted to children and all that, and that's an issue. I don't think it is for this type of business.
No, it shouldn't be.
I need to see the problem with that.
Are there any other comments from the council?
I've been in, and she's done a really nice job. She explained how she's gonna, if they do decide to alter any, so I think it's a nice addition for us.
Okay. And so then, any other comments from the, from the audience? Okay, if not, we will go ahead and close the hearing at this time, and I guess we'll accept a motion from the council to accept the retail on-off sale malt beverage license for pistol paddies.
I'll make a motion to accept the retail on-off, off sale for malt beverage, and South Dakota Farm License for Pistol Paddies. Paddies LLC to be used at 445 North River Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any further discussion or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. You have before you on the next item in the agenda is personnel.
Mayor Todd, I believe Tim Long says something.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, this is my last council meeting as a councilman of Ward 2, and I guess I'd just like to take a minute of your time and thank the people of Ward 2 for having me to represent them for the last four years. It's been real, and it's been fun, but it ain't been real fun. Just thank you to the, to the good people of Hot Springs for having me to do this.
Tim's always had a lot of his stuff to add. I was going to make a comment, the South Dakota Pageant that was held here, I think they were glad to use our stage, and we are glad to have their sound system and their lights, and I think it went over as a really good success. So, thank you, South, the South Dakota Pageant Board.
Great, and absolutely great weekend here at Hot Springs because of that. Okay, we'll move on to personnel. I believe that we can take those items A through D as one, one item. I accept a motion to approve the personnel actions.
I'll make that motion to approve A through D. I'll second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we move on to committee reports, administrative and finance. Carol Ann.
Okay, we, we met today, our old business. We discussed adult-oriented, oriented business, discussed building, by building official Kim Barberi. We went over the ordinance with the committee. It's recommended for council approval. There'll be a public hearing July the 5th, and a first reading July the 17th. New business, Mayor Cotty informed the committee, there will be an executive session tonight, personnel. Budget hearings, the dates, July the 17th, the council will hear from groups seeking funds. July the 26th and 27th, dates selected for budget hearings, beginning at 5:00 p.m. Audit scheduled for July 17th at the council meeting with an in-depth presentation at 6:00 p.m. for all interested parties. The cemetery board requests to appropriate excess perpetual care dollars. Water fund CD maturity and finance officer recommendation to renew the covered stage. That's on the agenda tonight. It was discussed, $850 prior donation to the city for this. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Carol Ann. Item B, Airport Advisory Committee, George.
Yeah, I went out today to look at our new taxiway, and for all of you guys that haven't been out there, you should go take a peek. It's near completion, and they're starting to, they will be starting to mark the taxiway, but they have to wait for the oil to seep in a certain level or something that has to retain with the marking. They will be working on the sides of the taxiway with the top soil and planting grass, and that should start on Wednesday. The tractor has been worked on and ramped up, and it's back and working great, and I guess Friday they met with the contractors, and they had no one that may have done that with, and I was not there, so.
Okay, thank you. Custer Falls River Regional Waste Management District, Andrea.
They meet in July.
Thank you. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Ann.
There was not a form for the last meeting, so we'll meet again on July the 5th, the same day as the council meeting.
Okay. Evans Quench Advisory Committee, Kara.
I already reported for May, and the next Evans Quench Advisory Committee meeting is the third week of this month, and I believe Mayor Cotty will be appointing somebody new to chair that position. And I just wanted to say a special thank you to Owen. You're very, very special. You're very helpful, helpful to me throughout this whole process of chairing the committee, and I couldn't have done it without you. It means sincere thank you from the bottom of my heart. And also Chris, and Mona, and Tom, and the staff at Evans Quench, they have a really good group of people down there, and, you know, we gotta keep it going and keep them supported and happy and doing great things. And I also want to say, since this is my last thing, we've been through some really tough times as a council, and I want to thank everyone out of you, you know, whether we agree or disagree. We've had some hard decisions to make, and we got through it, and so thank you. And Misty, thank you. You're a wonderful finance officer, always there when I need you. And Kim Barberi, you're the best city planner I've ever had to work with on a personal level in business. Thank you so much. Mayor Cotty, I am so proud of you and what you've done. Everybody sees what you do up here, but behind the scenes, scenes, which we're not supposed to talk about, I've seen you make decisions that are really hard, and I really appreciate your leadership, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say just one thing, George, before you go on, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize Kara, because she's done a phenomenal job, a bunch of long hours, difficult committees. Nobody here knows what she's done there, and we greatly appreciate it.
Great. Absolutely. And I don't know, we can replace you, Kara, but we will try, so. Parks Recreation Beautification and Culture Development, Krista.
Well, we, I've already completed for the meeting, well, this month, the next month. The next meeting will be, I think, still at 3:00, July 3rd, at City Hall. I will not be chairing that meeting anymore because this is my last night.
You'll be the 5th.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
That one's something.
Yeah.
You can't, the doors lock before it was 30.
They'd be used to it, and I'm sure, I won't make mistakes. And same thing that, what she said. I want to thank the committee. The committee at Parks is just phenomenal, and they have really championed a lot of different causes. They are hardworking, they are just amazing group to work with, and I also, that team has, they just are amazing. All the support that we got from Owen, and I don't know how we would, especially that first year, when I was a little, stumbling along, got through a lot of the stuff, had it on my way. Thank you very much. And thank you, Misty, for all your, you really helped and answered all my questions. Kim Barberi, same thing. Oh my gosh, every month, here I come. I appreciate you very much. Thank you, Mayor Cotty, for, for staying there and helping us move the city, I think, a really positive and forward approach. And that's all I have to say. As far as cultural development, do you have the calendar for the New Year's Day? I understand that the South Dakota was a great success. I'm glad it was great, it was fun, and with my people, I appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Krista. Thank you for the work you've done. Mining and zoning commission, Kim is not here tonight. Oh, yes, she is. Sorry, can you, could you please give us an update?
Yeah, this is a real quick and easy one. We're having our meeting in two days, on Wednesday, at 7:00 in the City Hall. We're gonna be discussing the adult business ordinance changes. We're gonna be discussing some other ideas on things that have been coming through from the community engagement process. So, we're, it's mostly gonna be a bunch of discussions and a work session, so if you're interested in coming, you're welcome.
Thank you, Kim. Public Safety, Bob.
Public Safety, we'll meet this Wednesday to a market City Hall.
And Public Works, also Bob.
Public Works, a meeting June 13th, City Hall. Tracy was with us. Council-elect Sam Powers was there, Owen was there, Mayor Cotty and myself. A number of old business items. The sludge to water equipment, we've talked about that pretty frequently. Good news, not so good news. The parts for the sludge press are finally on site. They're not in transit anymore. Hot Springs has possession of them, that's the good news. The bid opening for the installation of the equipment was May 31st. Two bids were received for the installation of the equipment. The low bid from PKG was for $469,000. The second bid from Industrial Process Technology was for $483,885,000. Both bids for the equipment installation are significantly higher than the original estimate of $214,200 by the consulting engineer. The purchase price for the equipment itself was $162,600. Funding for the installation of the dewatering, the sludge to watering equipment, we account for wastewater fund, and the council will need to decide whether to reject the bids and rebid the project, or accept a low bid from PKG. The sewer line project on West 16th Street has started. The sewer line for 1405 Baltimore Avenue is essentially finished. There's some finished work that needs to be done, and a thank you to the city crews that worked on replacing that sewer line. Surplus property, the city's identified two additional properties down on South Garden Street that the council will need to decide whether they wanted to acquire those as surplus property. The discussion regarding the sewer line near extension on Fresno Avenue that I told you wasn't going to be discussed anymore, came back up. There was actually a resident on that Fresno Avenue that is having a failing seeping system, so we'll be looking at that again. The update on Pete Lee and Sons contract, there was a teleconference on June 14th with a new contact with FAA. Pete Lee and Sons and the city to continue discussions about the mining contract at the airport. Pete Lee and Sons are still hopeful they will be able to begin mining the first quarter of 2018. Downtown street painting and marketing of Thompson Street, hopefully those are done by now. As people were out last week, they should have seen the city crews out doing that. There's one new business item. The city was given a proposal by Gen Pro Energy Solutions, looking at the possibility, the advantages, cost savings, for converting to LED lights and solar panels for several city locations to reduce monthly electrical costs. Need to emphasize, it's just a discussion, looking at it, those kind of things. More information should be available in mid-July. The next Public Safety, Public Works meeting will be June 27th, City Hall, at 2:00. And I also would like to thank the Alcoa and Council people for their service to the community. I have been at this a year, and I've realized what a commitment it can be. So, I personally want to thank all of you, and I especially want to thank Tim. He babysitted me through a lot of the Public Works and Safety committees, and his experience and his advice will be, will be personal, so thank you, Tim, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob. Moving on to Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Skylar.
We have not had a meeting, but we did have a very busy weekend at the golf course. We had the Shields Demo Day on Friday. We also had the big Father's Day tournament this weekend, which was a success. Other than that, it's been business as usual, been really busy, so.
Thank you, Skylar. And the Volunteer Fire Department, Andrea.
Actually, it was on Tuesday, and I was helping with the South Dakota Pageant, so I was unable to attend, but since I have the floor, I would also like to say thank you to my ward of three for voting me in, and I hope I did you all proud. I do want to give a huge, huge shout-out to the employees of Hot Springs. I think they are absolutely amazing. They keep their departments running, and they know what they're doing, and the city wouldn't be the way they are without the employees. So, huge thank you to all of them. And I also want to say that the Hot Springs Fire Department and the Hot Springs Police Department is amazing, and I just personally thank them for keeping me and my family safe, and everybody else in Hot Springs as well. So, again, huge thank you to all of them. Good luck. Ron, you got this, no problem, you'll be just fine. And I guess I'm, yeah, last meeting, so back to my family and back to extracurricular activities with all of them, football, and volleyball, and gymnastics, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Let's move on to resolutions. We do have Resolution 2017-13, a resolution to abandon property within the Cotty's Grove Division. As we discuss that, I'd like to introduce Brian Brunner. He's the State Commissioner for School of Public Lands. Come all the way from here to be with us tonight, and Brian, if you've got some things that you'd like to clarify on this for us, we sure appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having me here tonight and for putting this on your agenda. Hey, my name is Brian Brunner, Commissioner of School of Public Lands for the state, and one of my jobs is to be the real estate agent for other state agencies. And so, the state Veterans Home in conjunction with the governor's office, I had some surplus property that they wanted to sell. They received approval from the legislature last legislative session, and then they turned it over to me to be their real estate agent in this process, in the process of the sale of these state-owned parcels. As part of that, we do kind of a record search and start looking at, at the pieces of property. A lot of times, the state has own property for a long time, and there are certain documents or things that need updating, and so we do a search of the register of deeds and look at what, what kind of things are out there and what things could help or hinder a sale, and that led to the resolution you have before you here tonight. First is the Cottage Grove subdivision. It's a very nice, even, platted subdivision, but if you're familiar with the terrain up there, it's very rocky. There's a canyon running through the middle of it. The subdivision looks nice on paper, but as a practical matter, it really would never be developed that way. And so, we made the decision to ask you to vacate that subdivision, kind of make a blank slate. After the sale, depending on who would purchase it or want to develop it, they could replat or change the subdivision in a way with city ordinances, but given the terrain in the previous plat of the Cottage Grove subdivision, we knew it was unlikely to be developed or be sold in an efficient manner with that particular layout. As part of that, though, is maintaining ingress and egress for the city to the water tower or the water tank at the top of the hill, and so you see an ingress and egress easement. There's a standard document we use with municipalities and counties and other government agencies throughout the state to give you that access lane. And then, also, there's a water line that already exists across the state property there, but there was never a proper easement recorded. There's some documentation with the county, but nothing There's some documentation with the county, but nothing from the state. It was state property when the water line was put in. And so, we run into those things periodically from time to time with state property, and so it's a pretty easy thing to clean up. We can give you a water line easement for a dollar across there for the water line you already have in place, so we know where it is. It's pretty easy to have DOT survey that out and then be able to call out that easement. And so, with your approval then and signatures, we'll be able to record all of those at the courthouse. And then, when we sell the property, those encumbrances will be on there, so the city water line and those things are protected. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. At this time, I would accept a motion to accept a Resolution 2017-13.
I'll make a motion to accept the Resolution 2017-13 to the resolution to abandon the property within Cottage Grove Edition.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we abandoned the property within Cottage Grove Edition. Is there any further discussion or question?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The blanks on the resolution will need to be completed before I can publish it, and it has, like, volume page and those are the blanks. I imagine those numbers come from the register of deeds office at the county?
You're going to have to sign it first, then they register it, and you'll get the signed copy with those dates, those volume and page numbers in it.
Do you know about how long that will take? Because there's requirements for publication for resolutions, and I know I shouldn't publish a blank.
It's usually about a week.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
And the only thing I would ask before we finalize that, just for, it's a detail, but we're just abandoning the Cottage Grove Edition section that's in the boundaries of the city. It does go into the county.
Good, good point. Good clarification, Clint, Kim. Any other comments or questions? You have the information in your packages. And again, a reminder that we're abandoning a portion of that addition. We're approving ingress and egress access to our water storage tank. And those of you that have been attending Public Works understand that's going to involve us building and scratching a trail out of that easement up to that water tank. And then, we're also getting approving a water line easement. Any further discussion?
I'll just add to my motion, I'm within the city limits.
If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No offense, sir. I must abstain. I work out there, so.
Okay, thanks, Andrea. Moving on to old business item A. Yes, go ahead.
I have a digital question for our attorneys in custody here. And this is something that's bothered me for several years. On all the agendas, they've said, for old business, new business, anything for a resolution, it says discussion, possible motion. Now, to me, that sounds like we should have the discussion before anybody makes a motion. But it's always been, I've always been told that we can't discuss it unless there's a motion to be made. Now, which way is it?
Well, I believe the way you've been doing it, where the motion is made, then you remove into discussion. I got handy, handy Robert's Rules of Procedure, but I don't have it with me. But that is the way you've been doing it, where you have the motion first, and then you have the discussion? Generally, that's the way we did it in several other municipalities.
I just, it's always just something that's bothered me. I was wondering why, if there was a motion to approve stuff before we discussed it.
Maybe we can change it to possible motion slash discussion.
I would just say turn it around.
I understand what you're saying. You would think it would have to be discussed first.
Yeah, because that's what it's always said on all the agendas. And I've been correct in thanking Mary Ann for, Carol Anne has kept me in line with that on several occasions. Robbie Trail and I, but I didn't know.
Yeah, it's stated that way in Robert's Rules of Order. So, let's move on to old business then, discussion, possible motion to establish a 501 fund for baseball tee-ball improvements. You should have a memo in your package, a summary of what's been done to create this motion is there. And the coaches are requesting to donate their payback into a 501 baseball tee-ball improvement fund. If you've got any questions about this, you know, go ahead and ask tonight. I think Noel is here, is familiar with, met with these coaches. And I will accept a motion to establish that 501 fund at this time.
I'll make that motion to establish a 501 fund for baseball tee-ball improvements.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just want to make sure they are paid and they give the money back, because then they're under our insurance. Is that right?
No, they're not receiving pay. They're acting as volunteers.
They're still covered.
Well, that was my question.
They're still covered. We clarified with our insurer.
Okay, that was my question. Okay, thanks.
Is this going to be up to the coaches every year? Or by passing this, is it going to be that from now on, the coaches are volunteering?
It would be just for the 2017 year, and then moving forward each year, if the coach wanted to do that, we need a signed statement from the onset that they're agreeing to do that. That way, we don't get into a, no, I didn't agree to that at the end of the season.
This does not set dollar amounts either. This just establishes that comes in that fund, and we'll be talking more about determining the dollar amount.
So, the signatures that we got from everyone didn't let us say that they were still being covered with insurance, is the only thing I have questions about. Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
My question is for Andrea. We tabled this because you had some concerns, which, are you okay?
I don't, I still don't feel it's okay. I feel, and I spoke to the coaches, it's funny that, I don't know how they keep wavering back and forth, but they only want to donate their time because they don't have the right equipment. And if it's a summer rec program, the city should provide it regardless if they get paid or not. So, I am going to vote no on this, because they, as a coach, should not have to really, not get paid just to make sure that they get the right stuff to do to coach a sport. So, I will, I, no, I don't agree with it.
What equipment is not provided that they need to operate safely for a summer rec program?
Then, my question, and then what's the purpose of this of not paying them? If you're saying that they have-
They're looking for field improvements, field and location improvements, not equipment improvements, is my understanding. And they have had, in the last couple of years, about $2,500 invested in just that program and the summer rec supplies.
And then, why would it come out of the Parks and Rec Committee? Why would these coaches have to take time away from their families and do that if it's something that we, as a city, again, are providing the baseball for the kids?
My understanding is they offered, we did not solicit this.
I just don't think it's right. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion? If not, go ahead.
So, the coaches approached the city about doing this. They're satisfied that they have all the equipment that they need to run the program? Thank you.
Don't we have any other means of actually funding this?
We are funding it.
But under the, what they're asking for?
We budget each year for recreation, for supplies, and that supplies, my item is shared by all the different activities. And what this is doing is creating an account that rolls over each year, doesn't, you know, hit zero at the end of the year and go back into our general fund. They would donate their, in lieu of wages, they donate that money or ask us to move that money from recreation reaches to 501 garden improvement, the baseball tee-ball program. And with that, they'd like to see improvements made at the facility, including a new net for the batting cage, possibly a scoreboard and other amenities.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Yep.
Go ahead, Bob.
The city's budgeting to pay these folks. They're asking of us not to pay them to put the money into a 501. Can't we just pay them? And if they wanted to be put into the 501, can't they turn around and donate it back to the city and designate that it goes into the 501 for 2017?
Well, I would prefer that they do that, they take the money and they do that themselves outside of city finances, because of the way we have to appropriate and approve all expenditures in the city. So, I'm not necessarily in favor of this. I was just trying to answer George's questions, but I would hope that as an organization, if they wanted to donate anything, it would be their time and resources and collect money and purchase equipment to continue furthering that program. That's a great question for them. Again, I believe that we solicited this.
I just don't get a one-fussy feeling why not pay our volunteers.
If we didn't pay them last year either, they'd not be supposed to donate their time to our sponsor either. They donated their time without just being a conversation.
Just a question.
Yes, go ahead, the audience.
I think if you have them accept payroll or pay and then have them donate it back, then they end up paying tax on that money. And so, it'd be far better for them to voluntarily not take the money upfront, and therefore they won't have to worry about it on their taxes and won't have to pay tax on that. Because they'd only be able to deduct that as an expense, as a.
Yeah, we discussed that. That was an incentive to go this way. Instead of paying it out, receiving it back, and just having the processing take us time and later do it, we have a loss. We thought, hey, we could just move money we budget from this account to an account that rolls over each year without that loss taking place.
Thank you.
I would hope that they would get this equipment they want, and then they can stop doing this, and then they'll be paid for their work in the summer.
And I think it's more than just equipment. Also, Carol Anne, it's also improvements to the field and so forth. Okay, are there any other comments, questions? If not, we'll take a vote. And Misty, would you call the roll on this vote, please?
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
No.
Andrea Kramer?
No.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Carol Anne Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Kristis Vellane?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
No.
Skylar Wessel?
Yes.
Five to three.
Okay. Motion does carry. Move on to new business. Item A, we want to surplus two Garden Street lots owned by the city of Hot Springs. You do have a memo with those lots identified in your package. And again, this is the first process in us putting these lots for sale. And I would accept a motion to surplus those lots at this time.
I'll make a motion to surplus two Garden Street lots owned by the city. I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to surplus these lots. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Three, none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have a possible motion and discussion to surplus 140 chairs from the Mueller Civic Center here. These would be sold per chair. It's not necessary for us to get a sealed bid for this surplus approach. We will obtain three estimates of their value and then set a price for each chair. And typically, in the past, they've sold a few chairs, people have a need for those. We'll accept a motion at this time to surplus those chairs.
I'll make the motion to surplus 140 chairs from the Mueller Center. I'll second.
Been moved and seconded that we surplus the chairs from the Mueller Center. Any discussion?
Why are we surplus them?
The ones like you're sitting on right now.
Are there any places that within the city that need them?
But why are we surplus them?
Because he just got new ones, and those are just sitting in there.
You got new ones, and these are just surplus?
Yes.
The last two years, we made two purchases. You get the bumpers each year to update our chairs and tables. So, now that we have those updated, we've got the old ones that have chairs and paddings flattened out. We surplus those. And to answer your question, Georgia, we try to cannibalize the best chairs we can without limitations. So, you see, at the airport, we've got these throwbacks out there at San Evans Bunch up in the conference room.
I thought we were just there.
Yeah, we, that's the best we can do, and that with that, we'll surplus, like, surplus the rest of the public.
And the chairs do take a lot of movement down here, and they're stacked and moved for various functions, so they do wear out. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We've got a discussion and possible motion to chip seal Garden Street. This is, would be funded by the Water Department at an estimated cost of approximately $10,000. Our Public Works Engineer, Tracy Bastian, has gotten a quote from By Two Minutes Paving and is pursuing a quote from Hill's Material that as of the end of business today, has not come in yet. And what we would do is require a later appropriation from the Water Fund Cash Reserve if this is approved. And what we're doing is, there's been a water leak that was repaired on that, a water vein repaired that was done on that street. And they repaired, chip sealed only part of the, or repaired only part of the street. And so, one of the things that we want to do is add some life and smooth out that, that repair, adding life to the street. We foresee that this Garden Street will see some increased traffic if we do get approval and the grant to reconstruct the Jennings Bridge and also during the downtown street reconstruction. And because of the Water Department impacted the street considerably with that water line installation last year, we feel it should come out of the Water Department's expense. We've discussed this at Public Works multiple times, and the general consensus has been that we do approve this project. With that explanation, I would ask for a motion to chip seal Garden Street and have that chip seal activity funded by the Water Department.
I'll make a motion to chip seal Garden Street funded by the Water Department, estimated cost of $10,000.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh-oh.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Well, my understanding is when I was living up on the ranch and there was hot weather and the drought, there was a minor, what I considered minor work to be done. I was told that they were a little wide number of dead, they had to, the whole street had to involve curbs. But shut up. Because I didn't want to have to take a curb either. But now, I'm saying, I don't know, was I, did somebody, did someone warn?
There will be, there will be no curbs. Because of the layout of the street and the airiness of it. And what we're simply doing is doing a seal coating of the street to improve the life of the street because of the increased traffic anticipated during the time that it would be used during the time that Jennings Bridge is being worked on and also the time that reconstruction takes place.
So, they, so they use.
Yeah.
Yes, it would be, it's a chip seal is taking an existing pavement and adding life to it by adding the oil, rejuvenating the oil and rocks and rolling it. So, it's not, and it's an existing paved street that we're doing it to.
It's not paved right now?
Yes, it is. Garden Street is paved. Always, yes.
Okay. I've got a couple major problems with it. First off, Garden Street doesn't go all the way through. It stops right down by the little cabin there. So you only talked about two blocks of street. Starts at the overpass and goes about two blocks and then it turns into Southwest River Street.
We renamed that recently. That was one of the streets that we renamed. The council approved that by ordinance about two months ago.
Was that one of those changes?
Yeah. So now it's one, one major, the whole street.
And what is it called?
It's South Garden.
So it'll be the whole street?
Anyway.
It'll go all the way to six.
And Bob will agree with me that this has been discussed more than once at Public Works. However, this street was in really bad shape long before the water line was put in. As customary, when you put in a water line, if you replace the part of the street that is destroyed, when you put the water line in, you do not come in and redo the whole street at the cost of whoever did it. Contractors never lay a water line for you if they had to replace the whole street every time they laid a water line in there. So I, I think this is, this part, I agree that Garden Street, South Garden Street, if that's what it's called now, needs to be chipped. I do not believe that the water department should have to pay for that because the part that they tore up has been repaired and that's the best part of the street. That's the smoothest part of the street. It's the other half of the street that is back that needs to be fixed. And I think that should be fixed under a normal, every normal street repair rather than saying, well, the water line dug up two feet on one side, so we're going to make or repair the whole 24-foot street. That's, that's ridiculous. And I have a real hard time with an enterprise fund, which the water department is paying for general fund expenses. The water department is an enterprise fund. They're self-supporting. The street department gets their money on the general fund. I don't think you should mix the two. But I guess as far as, as chip seal and Garden Street, I'm all for it. But I think that if we don't, if we have not budgeted enough money this year with the $50,000 to be able to do that street, then I would suggest that that street be put back on the list and when we budget for street repair next year, that it is considered in that time rather than take the money from another fund.
And I, I think that if we're going to redo the, the street, I think we really have to look into really redoing it for the better. Or we have to get some of the other streets, especially if it's going to be added, tractor on that one.
Krista, the way that the street, the dimensions are, it just does not let itself be doing curb and gutter because there's a canal on one side and Fall River on the other side and it's only, I don't know what, 17 feet, I think is what Tracy said, it's narrow. And we just don't have the, the space to do that.
You add curb and gutter to it also, then you have to tractor in, stormwater discharge, possibly doing some type of stormwater capture system, pull-up surface piping. I think that the best option would be to maintain it as is without the curb and gutter. If you expand the project to include that or you were told to replace, looking at a $10,000 expense, growing to over $100,000 to do it that way would be rip.
More than two blocks?
Yes.
More than two blocks?
It's a little fair.
I was, I'm going to correct myself. I, I went down, looked at it, and the street signs haven't been corrected, so it still says that Garden Street goes down to just in front of the log cabin. And from then on to 63, it's called Southwest River.
Yeah, I mean, from the item.
But I, I agree, it does need to be chip sealed. I just don't, I believe it should be budgeted as a street cost rather than a water for the cost.
And where we're getting this to, Tim, is this was a recommendation from Public Works engineer Tracy Bastian to fund it this way. So we're bringing forward that, the council for consideration. That's where the cost, the recommendation comes from. It's not.
I agree.
Yeah, but also too, that's major street. Major street improvements too. Usually it's the 212 sales tax fund that we do street, not so much the 101 fund. That, that's kind of semantics. 101 is more property tax funded and then sales tax is what we do for our major streets improvements. So that's how we break that cost down.
But what I'm saying is, is the street would be fixed with walk, with.
The 212.
The 212. Rather than the water department money, which is basically supposed to be set up as the enterprise fund, so that money just rolls over, goes back into the water department. It's not used for other stuff. It can be, I understand that, right?
Misty? Yes.
But I've never quite understood the whole deal. But in this case, I'm totally against funding it through the water department. I just don't think that's right.
Okay, you've heard him's concerns and comments. Are there any other questions or comments from the council?
I, I agree with Tim. Sure. I, I agree with Tim. It has been discussed a lot of the public works, that something's going to need to be done with Garden Street, started with the bridge and the road replacements. I'd like to see this work back into the 2018 budget. We're not that far off. Starting in July, looking at what that budget is. So I, I think it needs further consideration as to how it's going to be funded.
Okay, any other comments or discussion?
I have an agreement. I agree with Tim. Problem with taking from our water department is we always have excess things that come up in November. I just hate to see it tipping from there. And we know we have our new street coming through from Highway 385. And I know this is really important that we get this done. So I agree, I think we should go back to the committee to redo this.
So if, if we agree with what he said, and what he said, we just go and vote, vote no on it and then.
The motion on the floor is to do the chip seal Garden Street funded by the water department at an estimated cost of $10,000. And so all of those, those areas need to be, be agreed to if you're going to vote yes. And what I'll, will do is, I'll go ahead and call for a roll call and then if we.
George, can I change my motion? Can I alter my motion? No. We need to vote, say this is it.
Well, if, if it's, what we can do is, we need to consider this motion and then if there's an additional one. So at this time, are there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask Misty if you call the roll on item C then.
Everybody understand if you're voting on.
Okay. Again, just let me explain, if you're voting yes on this, you're voting to chip seal Garden Street and that it be funded by the water department for an estimated cost of approximately $10,000. And we do have a legitimate bid that, and that bid would be this fiscal year, this, this year. Any questions? Okay, if not, Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
No.
Andrea Kramer?
No.
Bob Nelson?
No.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
No.
Krista Spillane?
No.
Tim Tesher?
No.
Skylar Wetzel?
No.
Okay, the motion, the motion fails. And we'll go back to the Public Works Committee box and put this on the agenda. Item D, discussion.
We can go back a little. We've got a baseball coach here, I think. You had a game, is that right? You guys have games tonight, Rip? Just got over. If I could slip back in, I'm sure appreciated. To just go back and comment on the 501 fund.
Okay.
He's already passed, he's aware it's already been passed, but.
Okay.
He's hoping to come speak on that, but they have games tonight.
Well, if, if we've got coaches that come all the way here, let's go ahead and hear from our coach at that. We did approve it.
Is this on?
Yeah.
My name's Matt Ripper-Trow, or Rip for short. Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, Nolan. I'll go ahead and speak real quick. I realize you guys passed that, but I more wanted, told Nolan I wanted to come and thank you guys for those lights we got put up at the baseball field. That was a way bigger deal than anybody ever realizes. I remember I did come in here a year ago and talking about with council. It seemed like you guys really supported, got behind it. And Mayor Cindy Donnell, previous mayor was as well. Without Laclel's Energy, Fisher Electric. Now the gentleman has passed away. I wasn't even able to thank the man. He passed away shortly after the project, I understand. And then your city staff, Nolan really got after the financial side of it and really grind, grinded the wheels on that. And Billy and his crew got in there and really helped out. And we had volunteers kind of on the side too. So it was a huge group effort. Wanted to thank you guys. And the reason this was so important, getting those lights was, I feel like I shouldn't have been down here so. Reason it was so important, getting those lights, I'll, I'll go back there and tell you guys why is that we came out of, two years ago, we were in the Black Hills League where it was Hermosa, Edgemont, and Cruster. And we were real nervous, so what if they hold, what if they hold? So we kind of made a push to get into the Chatter League. And that was actually three years ago. This is our second year in the Chatter League. Well, guess what happened this year? Edgemont, Cruster, and Hermosa hold. And everybody would have been sitting, no league to go to, no umpires. And I'll tell you, Chatter is well-established, it's great league. Umpires, Crawford's also in the league. You show up, there's games to happen, we have umpires. And now that the lights are up here, Chatter is coming up playing double headers. Know quite a few of Chatter families from being in the league prior. And the first thing they come up and just say, wow, this is impressive. What a field, what a backdrop. And I always poke fun at them that they got to get their view of Chatter since we got the lights, so. Everybody's very impressed and they're glad that we're in their league. They're glad they have the competition. They need our field as much as we need to be in their league. So it was good marriage I've been teamed up with. So thank, thank you for those lights. We really appreciate it. And thank you Nolan for you and your staff and your help. Really appreciate it. Also wanted to talk real quick about that 501 fund. I understand it was passed. I can't speak for the other coaches, but I know the other coach has signed it. To me, that was a huge win-win deal. As far as I know, nobody was forced because it was all volunteer signatures giving up our, our funds to help those kids. I can't say I've never been offered that deal. I'm going to guess it's probably the fourth town I've been in where I helped a baseball or been part of baseball in the building and never even had that opportunity brought to us where the funds got to go back in, get kids' equipment, our batting cages or nets, and then those funds can roll over. I don't, I don't know how kids aim better, to be honest with you. And it was offered and the coach wanted to take this wage, he sure could, he or she. And the reason we didn't take wages because then it gets taxed. Because we talked about keeping our own money and start like a Hot Springs Baseball Association nonprofit. Then we got taxed and then you're losing bank for your buck. And then actually the city gets to keep all that equipment that's being bought. So I mean, it's huge for the city that that goes in. And if none of the coaches wanted to do that, all they had to back up, say, well, hey, I want to get my wages, which as far as I know, wasn't a problem to anybody. And then just to wrap up real quick, I appreciate you guys' time, more than ever I get in here to talk about this. So I just wanted to ask you how, where are we coming two years? This is just my opinion, nobody else's. I would tell you, you've got a group of volunteers, parents that are going full throttle. And the only thing I can compare it to is a cop that's sitting alongside the road, here goes that car 100 mile an hour by, and that city cops got to always catch up. Well, baseball was stagnant, stagnant in this town for five years. When I first came here, I got told there isn't no baseball. Or, you know, you got to play soccer or go to Rattler, Chatter, so we went to Chatter. So where are we coming in this two years is so far, it's unbelievable. And the growing pains, we've had some, and a little bit of nudging back and forth, but we're, we're really picking up. The city's, the city's right on our heels and they're going to catch us. We might not have a meeting this winter. The city staff getting down, getting on board. And I would tell you as well, Chatter, we've had a little bit of, oh, we call it growing pains, but what about that? Jeez, we didn't think about this. So we're sitting down with Chatter this winter too. They're going to get some minor details worked out. Can't thank you guys enough and your city staff for what you do for these kids. And we're up to 51 kids playing ball, 1,200 girls and guys. I mean, this is huge. You guys should be really proud and some of this town should be really proud. So thank you for your time and I appreciate all your help.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming and talking to us. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. And one thing, there'd be no baseball program if there weren't coaches. So we thank you for the time and effort you invested into those kids. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Parents give.
Matt? I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for volunteering to work with the kids. It's been talked about that the coaches felt this was something you needed to do because the city wasn't meeting your equipment needs and this was the only way to make that happen. Can you speak for that?
No, I don't, I don't feel that. I can't speak for the other coaches. I don't, I don't feel that was, was the issue. It was, we talked about keeping our wage and then go buy the equipment. And I think it was actually me that said, approached Nolan and said, hey Nolan, what if, what if you keep our money? We're not taxed. You know, because after taxes, you know, let's say you take 30% of that, we're out $900 right out of the gate. And that's $900 that could have went to equipment for those kids. And that's ultimately what us coaches were going to do with our money anyhow, was just donate it back to the kids and put it into a fund to get that equipment. I did not hear where the city said, we're not buying. You know, what I regret was is there's a pool of money for all the rec programs and there's X amount of dollars there. And to come from nowhere, I mean, baseball coming from nowhere out on that field in two years and try to expect you guys to fund this off the cuff, that's us not doing, our new diligence coming in here knocking on your door saying, hey, look at us, we need some of your money. That's something we didn't do and come to you guys. And that's, in my mind, that's our fault, not your fault. And then we spun this deal all together and we all sat at the table scratching our heads, can we do this, can we do that? Can we, and one thing I really pushed to Nolan was, I want this money to roll. We need this money to roll if we want to get a batting cage out there. And for, I would tell you this, the softball coaches didn't take this. They wanted their money and not a problem. But one thing that I, I asked Nolan once, I said, I would like, if the softball is not going to donate to this, that pool of money shouldn't be there for the softball. But in turn, if we build a batting cage, we're not going to tell softball where you can't build a batting cage. So softball coaches did donate their money, that pool of money went to the coaches that did donate that. And you know what? Next year, we might be back here again and there might not be a single coach that says, I want this, I want my money, I want to get paid.
Thank you.
I won't answer any other questions, guys.
I would, I would like to offer a suggestion. If you guys, if, I'm not going to be on the budget this year because I'm done. But I'm going to stay away. But it would be helpful to the council when it comes budget time, when they're setting their funds apart for this city rec, if they had, you know, whether they, you know, continue on with the coaches donating their time and using that money for stuff, if they had a, an idea of what you guys needed. Maybe there's someplace in the city rec that they could move stuff around a little bit. So they know what they need for the recreational programs that we have now. And since the baseball and stuff is relatively new, you know, just a suggestion, walk in and throw a number at them and give them something to work for.
I tell you, off the cuff, we need $1,000 a year and that's without donating those, donating those wages. And to me, the big part of donating those wages is getting some longer overdue batting cages. Tougher for me to get here in the city council meeting. I think I'm going on day 20 to 24 nights at a baseball field every night. And I have two kids running on the hallway off of here. So I, if you guys wanted a number to take a run with, I would say $1,000 and I think that's conservative, Nolan. I'm not sure what's budgeted now. I think it's a big pool of money that everybody comes from. And I don't want to cut into your guys' eating, but if you guys wanted to take a number to run with it, without the coaches', coaches' wages, $1,000 could be sitting there for the baseball and T-ball. I can't speak for softball. I'd be very generous, something back to go get some stuff done with, equipment and just, you know, baseball's is a big cost, you know? And typically, a city and a baseball association. And typically, a city and a baseball association will meet together in the middle. So this is huge. I've never been this far with the city out in front. I'm always trying to grab the city and come back. And we need your help. We need your help. So you guys are out in front of us of what I typically used to do for as well.
I have a statement and a question for you.
Is there?
2016, $1,100 was spent late 2016 for that program. And so far this year, $820 has been spent. So a thousand sounds just about right. And what, at least for the last two years since you've been involved, that what has been going back into that summer rec activity for supplying equipment? And then about how much is needed for this batting cage that you're looking at funding, just the ballpark?
You know what? It depends on, you know, without getting into deep, you can put soft offs off to the side. I mean, you can go over from three to 5,000. You know, and that's what we were hoping is a second year. Us donating these wages and we would be coming into our second year next year donating. And we want to sit at the table with you guys and say, okay, we found this batting cage. We're going to volunteer our hours putting this up. This is how much it costs. You know, and ultimately, we realize it's the council's decision on what's bought. And then we were going to come back and approach year two of possibly donating funds to go after this batting cage.
As a 501 fund, we could accept donations from the public towards this, two and a half of those dollars restricted. So as you get closer to your goal, if you wanted to stretch it a little bit, and we had a fund established to accept donations from members of the community that wanted to support it, we could do that.
Okay. Again, thank you very much for being here and answering our questions. And again, we appreciate those lights being up too. Because I bet some of those Chatter ball teams stay and have some ice cream and hamburgers and malts and stuff afterwards, don't they?
I would tell you, Chatter picked up on that real quick. I don't know if it was in our core. I forget where it was. But I saw Nolan was ordering the same Chatter's in our town 20 times.
Yeah.
And Chatter said the same thing last year. Hot Springs has come to our town 25 times this year. Can you believe that? So, thank you guys.
Thanks again. Moving on in the agenda, let's move on to item E. We have a possible motion and discussion to award the bid installation of the screw press at the wastewater treatment facility to PKG contracting for $469,000. And a summary memo has been provided in your package. And again, as you recall from Bob's report, the engineering bid came in substantially lower at about $216,000, something like that. Tracy, our public works engineer, has done some bid cabulations from other projects that are similar. The $469,000 bid for the scope of work that's being done does seem reasonable. And so we will accept a motion tonight for awarding that bid for installation of the screw press at the wastewater treatment facility to PKG contracting.
I'll make a motion to award the bid for installation of the screw press at the wastewater treatment facility to PKG contracting for $469,000.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have, it's been moved and seconded to award that bid. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Could I clarify just a little bit, so I wasn't being clear? This $2,000 that we're saying is over what was given to, what was estimated to us from the engineer. Now, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, Nolan, Misty. But in some of their estimates of previous, of the stuff that we got before we got this, weren't, didn't we come in under their estimate some? So we're really not, we're really not looking with the whole $200,000 difference?
I think for the screw press itself, those bids did come in slightly, slightly in over. Absolutely. I don't know the exact.
But when you read this, like, $2,000, $200,000 is scary. But if you can cut some of that off, because we actually bought part of it for under what was, what the estimated fund was, why then that $200,000 does look years ago scary?
Might still be a little scary, yeah. You're right, though. The press itself, we had an expectation of around $200,000 for that. With the change order, it came in at around $150. These are bounding numbers. So it's about $50,000 reduction from our expected cost. So I guess you can soften the 200 and then get 150 for the installation. But you're right, the bigger picture is we add a reduction in cost from the equipment. But no doubt, the increase in installation cost has far exceeded than what we expected.
I just knew that there had been some differences, but I wasn't sure what the whole number was. Anything over $5 is scary.
The installation cost was increased for what reason? I'm a little scared.
The installation cost was increased because we got an inaccurate estimate from the professional engineers that we hired to design, to design the whole process of the screw press installation.
I guess it had our expectations set up to be misled. The, you know, the expectations we had from our consulting engineer was that 214, 200. The reality, going price based on two quotes plus Tracy's additional outside bid research shows that no, the going rate is actually around 470. And the main difference comes from contract, subcontracted work for electrical and I believe.
Air conditioning?
Yeah.
H- H- VAC.
But basically, it was being subbed out. Our contractors seem to underestimate, or our engineering firm seems to underestimate.
I do know that we are legally having issues having to take care of it. So we didn't, I mean, we have to do something. And the air conditioning issue down there is something that I had a big concern about anyway. So, I mean, it's something we have to do, but I guess still, 150 is a lot. But we do have a fund to do this right now, right? We take care of the older and stuff that we have problems with right now, too.
No, this is a design to address the smallings down there. The air conditioning, it's an HVAC, the air ventilation system, that's more so just for the equipment. So we don't have a toxic gas that'll let the building that we're in, it'll circulate the air through that building just for that, that piece of equipment.
Is that where the employees are at?
No, it'd be a separate building from the main office area.
Let's suggest if we pass this, that somebody goes down there with a whip and makes sure that this thing is put in immediately so that we don't have any more delays. It's close.
PKG is jumping a bit for this. They're in between projects right now, so they said they're shovel ready and tomorrow we're just waiting for the note. In fact, Derek, the PKG contact me. I'm asking you to text during the meeting. I want to know how the vote goes because they're ready to mobilize that. They're anxious for the work if that's a one.
We don't want any more delays.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this issue? If not, Misty, could you go ahead and call and roll on this, please?
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrew Kramer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Caroline Swartsmach?
Yes.
Krista Blaine?
Yes.
Tim Tescher?
Yes.
Tyler Wetzel?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item E is a possible motion and discussion to sign the library cleaning contract with Black Hills Special Services. We've tossed this around. Black Hills Special Services bid did increase slightly. And we asked the library to take some multiple bids. Black Hills Special Services bid did come in the lowest of those. And they offered three separate contracts or cleaning contracts with different varying services. And this has been looked at by the library board. It's been approved by the library board. Been before the admin finance committee on multiple times. And the library board does recommend that it goes before the full council for consideration to accept the services that they have been getting at the library. The library is satisfied with those services. So I'll accept a motion to sign the library cleaning contract with Black Hills Special Services at this time.
I'd like to make the motion to sign the library cleaning contract with Black Hills Special Services.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any comments, discussion?
I do have a question. And so the same services are being offered?
The same services that they had before are being offered.
And the price changed how much?
I don't recall the exact number.
It was about $50 a month. It went to $730 a month. I'm sorry, I don't have what it was previously, but I think it's about a $50 a month.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have a possible motion and discussion to accept Department of Highway Safety grant for the purchase of three radar units. And this has been a memo that's been previously issued by Chief Close for this grant. That we do have the money in the police department supplying equipment budget, I believe, right, Misty?
There's a $1,200 portion. The rest, we will get the grant fund and then we'll appropriate those when we receive them. I think it's almost $7,000 in equipment total, $6,900.
Okay. So I will accept a motion to accept that highway safety grant for the purchase of three radar units.
I'll make a motion to accept the highway safety grant for the purchase of three radar units.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Are we going to get the radar units if we don't get the grant?
No, we probably would not purchase them had we not received the grant.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. We have a possible motion and discussion to submit a letter of support for the Hot Springs Rotary Club's grant application for construction of a covered stage in Centennial Park. And as we look at this, what we will be voting on is only to submit a letter of support for a grant that the Hot Springs Rotary is submitting for that, for that stage. There is no authorization tonight in this motion to commit any money toward that. We have got $850 that's been donated for the project. And if the grant then is approved and accepted, we will be approached later if the Rotary needs additional funding to accomplish that, that project. So at this time, I would, I would ask for a motion to submit a letter of support for this grant application.
I'll make a motion that we submit a letter of support to the Hot Springs Rotary Club for the grant application for the construction of a covered stage in Centennial Park. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we submit a letter of support. Is there any discussion, questions?
So it's a letter of support with no funds, even though in their application for this grant, they're saying they're going to get $2,500 from the city.
That's correct. This is just voting on submitting a letter of support.
So we're not confirming their.
We're not confirming. That's an estimate that they prepared after discussion with us in the public works meeting. And it's, we'll have to wait and see.
Okay, so we're not committing any funds.
But we're not committing any funds at this time. That'll be up to the next council to do. And Ken, do you have any comments or be available to answer any questions that the council might have?
Yeah, I'm Ken Dunleavy, I'm with the Rotary Club. And basically, if you take a look up and down from Chautauqua all the way down here to, to the Bueller Center here, I mean, Rotary's been involved with Potties on a Path, all of the covers for the picnic areas and stuff throughout the parks. And this is just another project that we thought we could do. We've looked at a number of projects and we knew that the city looked at a band shell one time. And we were approached by several different organizations that said, you know, we'd really like to have this. And so we're here to support you if you can put together something that might get this moving. And Rotary happens to have some grant money that's available. It's a 50-50 grant. And so we thought, well, we'll apply for this. And I'm not sure that we could raise the whole thing and that's why you'll see some for the city. But again, this is a several part process. You know, there's nothing that says that we're going to get the grant. There's nothing that says we won't raise up all of it, have to finish it off. But at the same time, we need to have some kind of process and stepping forward. And we're moving the whole process forward. And that's what we're looking at here. That's why we're asking for the first step. Let's go see if we can get half the money and then we'll worry about the rest of it later.
Thank you, Ken. And I think, again, I reiterate the appreciation on the city's part for the work that the Rotary has done. We look at those picnic shelters, bathrooms, and so forth. We do appreciate it. And it's always been quality work and a community effort. And that's, that's very, very much appreciated. So I would encourage the council to consider this letter application, favorably. Any other questions or comments concerning the motion before us? Hearing done, I would ask all those in favor then of submitting a letter of support for the Hot Springs Rotary grant application, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ken.
Pw, thank you.
Thank you.
And we got a possible motion and discussion to accept a plat in ingress egress easement with the state of South Dakota Office of School and Public Lands for access to two buildings on lots A and B located on the state Veterans Home campus. Ryan, if you want to come and explain this to us.
Good evening, Ryan Berger, Commissioner of School and Public Lands again. This item is fairly straightforward with the construction of the new state veterans home. There are two buildings there that could be repurposed. It could involve a sale or a lease, some sort of, with some sort of other entity. In order to do that, we have to create a legal land description. So that involves platting those two particular lots. And in order to do that with the county, we also, it makes sense, provide access. And so you see a plat there with ingress and egress and would allow us to create those legal land descriptions and possibly move forward with doing something with those facilities.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. You do have that information in your package. I will accept a motion at this time to accept that plat, ingress and egress easement.
I'll make a motion to accept the plat in ingress and egress easement with the state of South Dakota Office of School and Public Lands for access to two buildings on lots A and B located on the state Veterans Home campus.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept that plat for that ingress egress easement. Is there any discussion, question, or comments?
I have a question. Would you say they're interested in offloading the cottage in the Department of Social Services building? Is that they're going to be tearing it down? Is that the, what's it going to be?
You're referring to the old, the old men's tent, men's laboratory, the social services that I'm finding part of. The idea would be to work with either a private or a government entity to use that facility so that it provides maintenance and repair so that it would not have to be tore down. Long-term, if there were no purpose for it over 20, 30 years, that would be a possibility as facilities. You know, we've seen that at some other state campuses, I guess, Redfield and Yankton were built over time. If they're not occupied, are hard to maintain. And so rather than getting to that situation, that's an expense. We're attempting to sell or maintain that building.
And Kara, I believe the social services is interested in staying in that building. And there are some economic development opportunities for some of the organizations. And lots are looking at that. I think it'd be, it'd be a good, good building for us to maintain.
Do these things include the installation of water sewer line versus just an easement that we can drive up there?
For now, this would be an easement. We would work with a purchaser at the, on the State Veterans Home campus to provide those things. This is part of the reason for doing it. They're a very narrow lot in ingress egress with these types of facilities. We'd like to explore those economic development opportunities that the mayor was referring to, but we also, you know, would not want to repurpose those facilities in the middle of the State Veterans Campus if it wasn't a compatible use with the primary purpose of the campus, which would be in the State Veterans Home.
If they sell it, they're still hooked up to all the state water sewer line?
Yes, we'd have to work with them with some sort of easement or agreement in order to use those facilities. Same thing with any party that would be needed. There are a variety of those things we'd have to work on. So this is kind of the first step along that process. We're exploring those opportunities with hopes that we'll be able to find an interested party in using those versus what's happened in some of the other communities where we've got two vacant buildings in Redfield where the cost of a million dollars to tear those down. Rather than getting to that point, if we can work with a local entity and repurpose those, some economic development opportunities, it's a much better deal for the state and for Hot Springs.
I have a question for you. Are they still on your heating system or not?
I'd have to talk to the State Veterans Home about that. We are still maintaining utilities there. They haven't been mothballed. Social Services is still using the basement. Department of Labor had been in there as well. And so, you know, we're still maintaining those facilities. It's just they're not currently being used.
Yes, and they are on the, they still are on the...
And they are leaving. Canny Cottage is being used right now. It's rented out. The family lives there.
Okay, any other questions, comments or discussion? If not, all those in favor of accepting that plat for the ingress and egress easement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's a heavy heart, I oppose.
So we had two. Did you get that? Okay. Motion does carry. We also have a possible motion and discussion in item I to set a bid opening for the Front Line Irrigation Main Installation Project for August first, two thousand, August first, two thousand seventeen at two PM in City Hall. And what this is, is an upgrade to the Front Line Irrigation Main funded by a little thousand, forty thousand dollars that's been transferred from the Two Twelve Fund to the Golf Course in two thousand seventeen and two thousand sixteen budgets. This irrigation system is a critical upgrade as the front line irrigation continues to need to be improved upon. And this has been identified as an issue with the Golf Course master plan. So at this time, I'd accept a motion to set the bid opening date for the Irrigation Main Installation Project on August first.
I'll make a motion to set the bid opening for a Front Line Irrigation Main Installation Project for August first, two PM at City Hall. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept, set this bid opening date. Are there any questions, comments or discussion?
I had a few things that I thought maybe we should have added and that is that we have put it in the controller already up there. Is that right?
They did, and I don't know whether that was on the front line or the back nine. You don't understand. But that is simplified there.
Yeah, right.
I believe that was for the back nine.
And then just talking to Jason, I noticed it increases the size of the lines or that they have more pressure without the others.
Right, yeah. It's part of the thing that's, that's been identified as we get into the dry season, they do have problems keeping buildings, areas watering.
And we worked on this on the master plan quite a while back, so that's good.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of setting this bid opening date, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to a possible motion and discussion to set a public hearing for use permit from the Hot Springs Theater for two existing poster locations to create an off-premise sign locations. And this hearing would be seven ten on the fifth of July. And what this does, it allows the Hot Springs Theater to use two of their four sign spaces to rent out. And we currently have Golf Course and Evans Plunge a poster in those two spaces with the intent to maintain them there for a minimum of a year lease. It helps us advertise our Golf Course and Plunge as people walk by. So at this time, would entertain a motion to set that public hearing?
I'll make the motion to set the public hearing for use permit request from the Hot Springs Theater for two existing poster locations to create off-premise sign locations for seven ten PM on July the fifteenth, seventeenth.
Okay, is there any discussion? If not, all those in...
I'll second.
Oh, sorry. Jumping ahead there, sorry. Is there a second to that motion? Bob seconds, okay. Any discussion?
Yes. I've managed to confuse myself. The motion talks about creating off-premise sign locations. And then the narrative talks about using what I center on premise locations. I'm confused.
Here's, now here, I'll try not to confuse you further. The way the verbiage works is off-premise is considered a sign. It's when a business has a sign for a different business, it's not itself. So it's using its frontage to put a sign up for a different business. Say, for example, Evans Plunge wants to do a large poster for the Golf Course on the exterior. We would need to do a similar, do so for a permanent fixed sign. So the way it's worded is only using it ultimately is for promoting a different business not related to itself.
It's not on the premise of the building that's being promoted.
Okay, so the Golf Course, Evans Plunge is using their advertising dollars to have these two signs on building.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor for setting that hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item K, discussion, possible motion for a public hearing for on-off sale retail malt beverage license and retail liquor license transfer from Frankie's Place LLC at eleven, one, one-ten South Chicago Street. And that'd be at seven fifteen. And that began also on the fifth of July.
That would be the seventeenth.
The seventeenth of July, excuse me. I wrote that down. And again, this is a public hearing for transfer of a license and a new license for what is currently being, being called, doing business as Jenny's right. This business is sold recently and it's changing its name to Frankie's Place. So I'll accept a motion at this time to set that public hearing.
I'll make the motion to set public hearing for on-off sale retail malt beverage license and retail liquor license transfer for Frankie's Place LLC at one-ten South Chicago Street at seven fifteen PM on seven seventeen seventeen. I'll second that.
Is there any, is there a second? There hasn't been a second? Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, Misty could give us your finance officer's report, please.
Thank you. I'll try not to get emotional. All these goodbyes in this job sometimes are difficult. I would like to thank each and every one of you for the time and the efforts that you put in. Just like all things, you don't realize how hard it is until you start doing it. And I appreciate all of you and I, a better person, for the time that I was able to spend working with each of you. I thank you for your service to your community. You're not going away. You're still going to be community members, so we hope that we're lucky enough to still have you involved in things that interest you and things that you're passionate about because that is showing the work that you did for your community. And so thank you for that. And Nolan, I can't believe since the last time I was sitting next to this table, I'm not going to get emotional about it, but I've also enjoyed working with you and the time that I've spent learning from you and getting towards the side of you for someone who my favorite and my mentor of this place. So we have big shoes to build for the next person who's interested in this position, but I wish you well in your new ventures and I know you're going to be great. Yes. So back to business now because the other thing I've learned in this job is that change is inevitable and it always happens. And so as you sit here and talk about the first hard year that you had, Krista, I think, well, the first hard year is coming for a few of you. And it comes every year and there's change and it's inevitable and we work through it and we'll grow because of it. So budget hearings, schedules, now that Nolan will be out, Carolyn gave a good update from our admin finance. I'll send an email out to remind each of you and our new council members that we did schedule for July twenty-sixth, nine-twenty-seven. It's a Wednesday and Thursday of that week from five to hopefully no later than eight o'clock each day for our first two budget hearings. Some of you have gone through this before, some of you have not. We hope to satisfy all the requirements you need in those first two meetings, but stay tuned because discussions sometimes get lengthy and a lot of details need ironed out. So we may have to schedule additional hearings if we can't get through all the information. Those first two, a lot requires that we have the ordinance available by the first meeting in September, so it gives us plenty of time. We hope to not go into rally week since we tried to do that once and it didn't go over very well. It does give us the following week, the thirty-first through, I think, the fourth, if we need to schedule a couple more. We are working on a mid-year supplemental appropriation ordinance. Probably see that on your agendas for the second meeting in July. But we talk a lot about budgets and asking a budget time, but we also have the city to run and surprises happen. So we have several items so far mid-year that we'll need to provide a supplemental appropriation for. And I'll have those ordinances in your packets for review with some notes in there too. If there's any questions about any of it, please don't hesitate to ask before the meeting so I can show you any reports or details might need to help support and encourage your decision process. We are also going to get our two thousand and sixteen audit presentation by our auditors at the July seventeenth council meeting. You've been here and watched those before. They go over a lot of really important, really big numbers, but they do it real fast because they're real good at it. If you're interested in a more detailed review, they will be available for a meeting that you are all invited to here at the Mueller Center, six PM on that same day. It's not a council meeting, so you won't get gay for it, but I will post a notice of the forum and publics invited to attend as well. So that would be a more in-depth review and an opportunity for you to ask some detailed questions. And I do hope to have at least those in the council, the report for review prior to that meeting, although that is in Kato's hands. So six PM here at the Mueller Center prior to the meeting of seven seventeen, I asked them to please get done by six fifty and provide a ten-minute break before we start the council meeting. And then they'll present to the full council and the public at seven. We'll have a couple hearings that day, so whatever time during that meeting, they can do that. Our assistant finance officer went to finance officer school and had some great reports. She is very good at taking notes and had some great feedback as a new assistant finance officer to provide to the committee that puts on the school. A lot of things that I thought was a very good suggestion is possibly breaking up the groups into newer as opposed to more seasoned finance officers, those that have been in the job longer. There always is new information to review, but when you review at high level for someone who's brand new, they miss a lot. So I thought that was a really good suggestion and I thank you all for letting her go. It was definitely time and money well spent and she came back with a lot of great ideas and questions and notes. And it's inspiring when you go and get to spend time with your peers and listen to. She said the same thing I always report to you. It's the time when other people are talking about what they go through in their city that you learn the most. So being there is invaluable. We appreciate it. On that same training note, there are a couple SDML trainings that the two of us are attending on the twenty-ninth. It's a Thursday. We'll be going to peer for a debit credit workshop. That is ten to three trainings, so we're going to try to make it up there and back at the same day. We'll miss that day of work. And then on seven thirteen is the budget training again in peer. That's open to council members as well. If you're interested in attending prior to the budget hearings we're going to have, it's a good training course put on by Rod Fortin from the Department of Legislative Audit. And then last training I'll talk about is the upcoming elected officials training. It's not just for new council members, although you are encouraged and invited to attend, but it's also for current elected officials and even employees. If we are lucky enough to have a city administrator that's, so there might be something busy and standing attending. So if sent you know that, be sure to let me know if you can make it to any of those trainings because they're certainly worth it. And that's all I have, but thank you, all of you who have served. I'll miss you, but don't go too far.
Thank you, Misty. Nolan, city administrator, report, please.
I do my bad word for Misty and focus on business first and then thank you right after that. From a business standpoint, we had to miss out the Dakota patch here this last week, which is great for not only the organization to be back at Hot Springs, but also for our economy. In the same light, we had the Golf Course have their Father's Day in the same weekend. So last week was a big week for Hot Springs this week. Another big week, of course, from a tourist standpoint, we've got the Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival on Friday, Saturday and Sunday this week in Centennial Park. So we're excited to have that. We're not going to have a meeting before the next big event, which is the Fourth of July celebration of Hot Springs. So on the Fourth of July, we'll have the parade downtown, per usual. The Nixon alert go out the week before and make sure the public's aware. Again, expect traffic delays, expect high pedestrian activity during those times. From a park standpoint, we are starting the Butler Park Tennis Court and Basketball Resurfacing this week. We sent out a Nixon community alert today as well as Facebook posts. So anybody looking to use that part of this Butler Park complex, it will be closed for approximately two weeks. That's all weather depending, but it looks like weather's good with the exception of some rain, maybe Friday or Saturday morning. From a streets perspective, we do plan to proceed with some chip seal work and some asphalt work. We have fifty thousand budget for chip seal. That's out of the two-one-two fund. So that almost likely to take place in the months of July and possibly August. And then I believe George Batumnas and Hills both have votes in now for asphalt patching. So Hills responded control that her vibe today and I believe, I'm sorry, that's for chip seal. So Batumnas would be the low price for chip seal and they're the ones most likely going to proceed with that here in the next two weeks to do some chip seal projects. That'll happen pretty soon. And in asphalt, I'm not quite sure who the low quote is on asphalt. And I believe that's all materials for the water patching. That'll be just for wherever we did water excavations, not moving in addition to it. With that, I hope Misty said, you know, we're losing four experienced council people and getting four folks that are entirely new to the whole council organization. So with that, I hope the board of party, we've probably worked with you guys to put in two years of, at least two years, for the two years of hard work. It's a little bit like feeling nothing where you start at the surface and you just keep going and then by the end you're all in tears. So with that, thank you for your time. Thank you for the work you guys have done. I know we haven't always agreed on everything. I know it tends to cause a bit of friction, but that said, you guys did a job nobody else wanted to do or you were voted in to do a job that somebody thought you could do the very best for their work for the community. So thank you for your time and what you did. And like Misty said, don't be a stranger to the community. I know many of you will still be involved in this in a different capacity. With that, there's four of you who are coming back for another tour of duty. So I hope you guys, if you're new to that organization and you're going into your, your second year, you've got the confidence to not, I wouldn't say lead the four that are new to the council, but to be an answer to them, to be their answer to questions they might have. You guys have more knowledge than you probably think you have in your position, having one year experience or I guess in your case, more than one year of experience, but definitely, offer that insight that you have, offer that knowledge that you have because you don't know what you don't know and there's a lot in this organization that we don't know. And there might be an example where that person has an issue that they had an issue with in the seventies, they're going to bring up this year. So it's very unique, the fact that you never know what you're going to get, but you guys have more information than you, than you probably could have celebrated for. With that, thank you to the city of Hot Springs. Thank you to the council for the time that they let me be your city administrator. I know it's been interesting, but the same light, it's been productive. We've had a really good two and a half years. That was set up before my time with the previous mayor, with Mason's work as well. And I've That was set up before my time with the previous mayor, with Mr.'s work as well, and I've got enough of the confidence of George moving forward in the new council to continue the progress we've made, and I don't expect to see anything but great things from Hot Springs moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Nolan. And moving on to the mayor's report, several things I'd like to just share with you. I did have the privilege to attend the grand opening in Ribby Cuddy of the new VA call center up on the VA campus at our Hot Springs facility. They hope to have up to 120 job vacancies filled by the end of the fiscal year, and obviously that exacerbates our need to ensure that we have adequate workforce housing for these folks that are moving here, who work here in Hot Springs, if we want them to live here in Hot Springs. So that'll be something that we'll be working on diligently in the upcoming year. The Boulder Falls paving project is moving forward. We'll be having a meeting with our contractor, Quinn Construction, on this Thursday, June 22nd, at the clubhouse, that's a pre-construction meeting, and that will be followed at 4:00 PM by a meeting with the Boulder Falls lot owners and property owners and residents. Notices for that and for the property owners have been sent out by the Boulder Falls Homeowners Association, and that is get acquainted and meet the construction company and allow them to give us a briefing on how they are going to proceed. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the four council members that are going off the, off the council, and I want to do that formally. So I'd ask that if you would stand as I read your name, Ward 1, Kara Hagan, Ward 2, Tim Teshur, Ward 3, Andrea Kramer, Ward 4, Krista Salani. I think you all have performed a very important civic duty at the, the ground level of what makes a democracy tick. Your importance to this city and the job you've done has been very, very important in that you're the one that's the check and balance to see that power isn't centralized, either in the mayor's office, around the city staff, or some department within the city. And you've got oversight as to how the public's money has been spent, and we've appreciated the efforts and the time that you've put in doing that. It's been mentioned here, it's not an easy job, a lot of committee meetings, a lot of phone calls, and some disagreements, and that's what makes democracy work, if we can disagree and come up with the best decision. So on behalf of the city of Hot Springs, I want to thank you, and I ask that those gathered here, give you a round of applause, well deserved for the... Finally, it's with sadness, it's been mentioned here, that I announced that our city administrator has submitted a letter indicating that he'll be resigning his position effective the 30th of June. Nolan has an opportunity, and he has the talent to move on to bigger and better things. And as a mayor, reluctantly, I support that decision. I found that in organizations where talented people are promoted and advanced to higher positions, it strengthens rather than weakens an organization, because it attracts better people to come in and fill those positions when they're empty. And Nolan, we appreciate the countless hours you've spent and the positive contributions that you've made to the city of Hot Springs. And I just want to take the opportunity to read a part of Nolan's letter, I know the council has received this, but it, it says, reflecting on my tenure as city administrator for Hot Springs, I'm optimistic about the town's future, knowing what has been done in the previous three years. Financially, the city is in much better position than it was in 2014. Organizationally, we have great employees doing exceptional work. I'm honored to have been a part, a small part, of a much larger narrative for the city of Hot Springs, and wish the community and the city of Hot Springs organization all the best moving forward. And I couldn't agree more with those words, Nolan. And personally, I want to thank you for all the help you've given me in settling into this job. There's only two things I'm going to ask. Number one, your cell phone number.
Everybody has it.
And number two, that you leave that basket. For those of you that don't know, Nolan has a little basket on his door, and every morning I go in and take a couple shots to see how it goes. Unfortunately, most of the time I miss, so, but we just ask that you, you leave those. But we do send you off, Nolan, truly, with God's blessing, and we know that you're going on to bigger and better things, and we thank you for your service to our community. And I'd ask that we give Nolan a round of applause.
Thank you to Nolan.
You sure can, Carolyn.
Thank you for everything. I know it hasn't been easy all the time, it hasn't been fun, but we appreciate everything you've done for this community. There's a list, look around, thank you.
At this time, I would like a motion so that we can go into executive session for legal and personnel matters.
I'll make that motion, Nolan, to set this session for legal and personnel matters.
Is there a second?
Second, I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I ask you a question, if you could help me out with this. I said oppose instead of saying abstain from the second, that's a home vote, and so I'd like to change my vote to say, I know it's the same outcome, but to be abstain, and to say abstain instead of it being opposed.
I know it is an emotional thing, so I don't see a problem with it.
What I would like the council to do is to call it for a new vote. It's already, it's since it's on the agenda, call it for a new vote.
Okay.
Sorry. How does that work for a minute, sir?
Hmm?
How does that work for a minute?
We're still...
Well, we haven't went backwards yet.
Oh, can we go back into session? What, I don't know what item, letter that was.
Which item? I think it was H. It was, it was H on top of the...
The mayor can call a new vote on item H of the agenda. Move it for a motion to call it for a new vote first, and then, had questions, just redo it.
And then for a minute, leave the old one and the new stuff?
Yes, correct.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the council back into session at 9:21.
Sorry, everybody.
And the first item of business is that we'll take care of item H if we can have a motion to reconsider the vote on that motion to accept the flat ingress easement with the state of South Dakota Office of School and Public Lands for access to two buildings on Lot A and B located on the State Veterans Home due to some confusion that occurred during the voting.
I made the original motion, so I'll make the motion to re...
Re...
Re-hatched motion for, to accept the flat ingress easement.
Okay, is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we re-vote on this motion to accept the flat ingress easement. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a, a vote call.
Kara Hagan?
No.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
Abstain.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
No.
Krista Salani?
Yes.
Tim Teshur?
Yeah.
Skylar Wettel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion did carry. Then we have a couple of items to...
Do we want to re-vote on it now? Because that was just to redo it, right? To call a new vote, and now we need to do it, right?
Correct. Okay.
So I'll make a motion to re-vote on the motion.
Okay.
No, now you're making the motion like it was originally.
Yeah, the original vote, the original motion to accept the flat ingress easement with the state of South Dakota Office of South Dakota Public Lands for access to two buildings on Lots A and B located on the State Veterans Home campus.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, it moved and seconded that we approve this easement. Again, Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Kara Hagan?
No.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
Abstain.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Krista Salani?
Yes.
Tim Teshur?
Yeah.
Skylar Wettel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the motion did carry. We've got a couple of items that we need to consider out of executive session. You have in your possession, contract, proposal, contract for attorney services from our attorney. I would accept a motion to accept that contract at this time.
I'll make that motion to accept the contract from our, for our city attorney.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the contract with Chris Beza and Garland. Is there any discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. We've got one more vote here. Don't confuse. Okay, and we do, I'll accept a motion to accept the resignation letter that we did receive from our city administrator.
I'll make a motion with regret to accept Nolan's letter of resignation.
I'll second that with regret.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept with regret the resignation we received from our, our city administrator. Any discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. I tried to get a rider on there, Nolan. I accept the motion to carry.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded and adjourned, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.